I could have your attention, calling to order the meeting, the regular city council meeting of the city council of the city of Placerville for February 28th, 2017. If you would like to rise and join with us, a pledge of allegiance. Thank you very much.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Since we have a good crowd here tonight, I can't help myself but to make a little statement before we get going. So I am. Thank you for your attendance at today's meeting. Sharing divergent points of views in the public square is an essential part of the American experience. It is no wonder why the founding fathers made it the first freedom in the Bill of Rights. As long as we treat each other and this body with respect, everyone will have an opportunity to exercise that fundamental American right. We have a few items to take care of before the podium will be made available for public comment, so please bear with us. Would you like to call the roll, please?
Councilmember Acuna.
Here.
Councilmember Borelli.
Here.
Mayor Clarici.
Here.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Here.
Okay. Announcements from, or announcements or presentations to the public, I do not believe we have any of those. But we do have our brief comments by the city council. The city council is engaged in a variety of different activities, and we'd like to take a few minutes right here to sort of let you know what we've been up to. So we'll start over here.
I have nothing to report.
No other comments.
No other comments, okay.
Mr. Mayor.
You didn't come this way.
You didn't come this way.
Well, I wasn't going that way. Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. I'm happy to report that with Steve Yule's assistant, our community directors, we had a meeting early this morning out on the corner of Bedford and Main Street to begin the process to break ground on the Vietnam monument.
Excellent.
And there'll be some further activity later this week to talk with Doug Veerkamp Engineering to get that hole dug for the monument. The granite monument contractor was here this morning and part of the pre-construction walkthrough. It was a very successful meeting this morning, got a lot of questions answered. So we look forward to seeing that monument begin to actually rise out of the ground very, very soon. So thank you, Steve, and all those that have been involved in that.
That's excellent news. I would like to add one thing about that. For those of you who don't know, the monument is to find a final place for plaques that used to be on Main Street, and they were for each of the killed in actions during the Vietnam War. And there were, I believe, seventeen plaques. From Placerville, from Placerville, which is a pretty astonishing number when you consider what the population of the city was and the area. They weren't from within the city necessarily, but from the area was in those days. So this is to find a final place for those plaques. They were eventually taken up, for the most part, off of Main Street because of time and wear and tear, and there were trees involved, there was a bunch of things. And actually, if you'd like, right over in the corner there in the window, they are there, I believe, still facing out towards Main Street, so if you ever want to just take a look. Those plaques will be taken down to a monument down at the corner of Bedford and Main Street for a final, more respectable place to reside. So anyway, that's the backstory on that.
Well, I just want to give some more thank yous to our staff and crew for more storm cleanup. We, it's just been an ongoing thing, and if any of you watched the news tonight, you saw the horrendous amount of damage in all El Dorado County, but our little Placerville suffered a lot too, and we, I think, just did a stellar job. Thank you guys again, and gals.
That's it for me. Do we have a closed session report?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. Tonight in closed session, the council, with all members of the council present, unanimously rejected the Aaron Smoot claim.
Thank you for that. The adoption of the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to pull item 12.1 from our agenda due to a delay. And I would also like to pull item 12.3 from the agenda. I acted in haste by bringing this item forward as a resolution, and I did a disservice to my fellow council members by not asking them if they wanted to have a discussion about that, which is the proper process. And I did them a disservice with that. So with that, I'd like to move approval with the agenda without items 12.1 and 12.3. However, I look forward to hearing what you all have to say at public comment.
Second.
Okay. Okay. Let's do a roll call.
Councilmember Acuna.
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli.
Aye.
Mayor Clarici.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we are now, there are no ceremonial matters. Now we are at the public comment period. I would like to provide a couple of comments that reflect my feelings about the subject that has brought most of you here tonight. I will also be outlining the rules we typically use during the public comment period. Now, I want to make it clear, these are my feelings. I do not speak for the four other people up here on the dais with me. Neither Placerville nor El Dorado County currently has sanctuary status. Yet, for several decades, our local institutions, law enforcement, schools, health care, et cetera, have all managed to function under whatever federal mandates that happened to be in place at the time while engaging the various immigrant communities in a positive way irrespective of their legal status. I fully expect those relationships to continue regardless of policy enacted in Washington or responses from Sacramento. There is no guarantee that SB 54 will pass or will be signed into law, in which case the very many, very concerned citizens that have communicated to us their feelings about it and other council members over the last few days had better hope that we can continue to navigate the murky waters of immigration enforcement with the same level of care that we have in the past. From a personal standpoint, I have fairly decentized the Hispanic community, both documented and undocumented through family relationships. I have a personal interest in this issue because of that. As the grandson of Italian immigrants, I grew up with the stories about the way they were treated when they arrived in America. The same hateful epithets tossed at undocumented Mexicans today were used to describe my no-no and nona 100 years ago. So I do not come to this issue without some level of knowledge or empathy. I imagine my fellow council members have similar stories to draw from in their life experiences. In a moment, the podium will be open for public comment. I ask that you follow a couple of rules that help us make sure that the discourse is civil and that everyone who wants to have an opportunity to speak can do so. Please speak into the microphone, it's very important that you do that. So if you're not too tall, you pull it down, if you're a little taller, pull it up, but make sure that you're speaking into the microphone. Please give your name and where you live for the record. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less. If you are working from prepared text, please summarize them so that they fit into three minutes, and if you'd like, give the text to the clerk. You cannot give someone else your three minutes. Please do not interrupt a speaker even if they say something you disagree with. I ask you to follow the golden rule, refrain from saying things you would not want said about you. So with that, and if we can all agree to kind of follow those rules, I expect you to bring your passions to the podium. In fact, I would like that. But we do just request, especially with so many people in the room, that we do follow a few rules of decorum, simply so that we, everyone has a chance to have their piece and everyone feels free to say what they're feeling. A hostile room sometimes can have a chilling effect on that, and we do not, I would think we would not want to have that. You all look like a wonderful crowd, so I fully expect you to be just wonderful. And so with that, the floor is all of yours.
Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Helen Mansfield. I'm a United Methodist pastor here in town, and I was really dismayed to see this on the agenda. I appreciate your withdrawing it and opening it to dialogue. My denomination has been doing a lot of work on this issue, including the bishop in this conference visiting some of these detention facilities. And what the immigration attorneys who are volunteering their time with the denomination and our bishop are saying is very different than what we're hearing in the press. They are telling us that many of these people who have been swept up in these raids, their only crime, their only crime is crossing the border without the proper documentation, and they do it out of desperation. And I would hope that we could find a way to have rational, reasonable discussion around this and that we would do a better job of getting to the real facts. Thank you.
My name is Sarah Pittenger. I'm a Placerville resident, and this is my first time attending a city council meeting here or anywhere. I came here seven years ago as part of the wine-making industry. As I'm sure you know, in the agricultural, wine, and hospitality industry, we rely heavily on immigrant population. I personally know, respect, and love many immigrants here, as I'm sure a lot of you do. It breaks my heart that many of them are living in fear. That's why I was very sad and disappointed to hear about the resolution opposing California's bill to become a sanctuary state. I am told that it has been withdrawn, and I'm very happy to hear it, but I'd like to share my thoughts anyway. Several years ago, I lived in a town in Wyoming where there was an ICE raid. I worked as a server in a restaurant that employed several hard-working Hispanic workers in what we called the back of the house, washing dishes, cleaning, doing prep work, and all of the most lowly jobs that nobody wanted to do. I was astonished to learn that at the end of their shift, they would then go to their second job. They never stopped working to support their families. When ICE came to town, every Hispanic person disappeared into hiding, whether documented or not. The town came to a standstill. All of us front-of-the-house people started working double shifts to do their jobs, washing dishes, chopping carrots, and cleaning toilets. My respect for them grew. In the meantime, several families lost their breadwinners who were deported to detention centers in Colorado and then on to Mexico, and any person with dark complexion was targeted. Agents chased down a non-Hispanic friend of mine who was riding his bike to work, tackling him and questioning him for no other reason than that he had dark hair and complexion. It was a very disturbing experience. Our town suffered, our businesses suffered, and our people suffered. What was the point? Not only did they need us, but we needed them. The experience has stuck with me for over 20 years. Our immigrants are very important contributors to our society. An immigrant friend here in Placerville told me yesterday that people are starting to disappear out of fear. Children are crying at night afraid they will lose their relatives, and for what? Seventy percent of California's agricultural workers are immigrants, and 50% of them are undocumented. What would we do without them? The resolution that was put forward cites a sheriff's group that opposed California's bill. However, police throughout the country are sharply divided on this. The Major Cities Chiefs Association represents the largest police agencies in the country. They counsel against expanding local police responsibilities to include immigration enforcement, saying that local officers back basic resources training and clear authority to assist in such matters. Isn't there enough strain on the police as it is? Do we really want to add immigration to their plates, and do we want our immigration population to stop calling in crimes out of fear of deportation? Under the Constitution, federal law determines immigration policy, but states have a role to play, and California has enacted several protective measures for the undocumented, like the Trust Act and lawful driver's license. The U.S. Supreme Court decisions appear to favor states' resistance. The court has ruled that Congress cannot force state and local governments to enforce federal laws.
Could you, I'm sorry, could you kind of wrap it up, please?
I'm about to.
Good.
Why advertise that Placerville is a city where immigrants aren't welcome? Why state publicly that we don't support the people who are the background of our agricultural and wine-making industries? Why would we want to make our hard-working undocumented immigrants fearful of deportation? In fact, shouldn't we be doing the exact opposite, making them feel safe? I have another letter from another wine-making family that's very similar, and I can submit that I know I can't use their three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Would anyone, oh, okay. Peter Wolf from Placerville. This makes me realize, remember that all politics is local and it's also personal. I urge the council to vote no on this resolution if it comes back to you. I believe strenuously that the principle of treating people decently is more important than the fear of losing federal money. There's no guarantee a Trump administration will be able to successfully withhold funds from cities around the county or that federal programs that help provide the funding will be terminated. The city of San Francisco has sued the federal government on the grounds that the Tenth Amendment to the Constitution bars Washington from withholding money from states in response to policy disagreements. The city of San Francisco is likely to prevail in this action. If in the distant future financial restrictions come to pass, I would gladly accept the challenges of unrepaired potholes in the streets and rusty swings in our parks that could result. As our city council members, you have sworn that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. I am confident that many of our friends and neighbors endorse my request that you live up to the letter and spirit of that oath and vote no on this resolution. That's a really fast clock. I'm hard pressed to understand why the city of Placerville is compelled to act on this matter and act seemingly out of unsupported fear. To be sure, supporting Assembly Bill 54 is not without risks, political, legal, and budgetary. However, the available data on crime, immigration, and safety in cities does not support the premise for extreme immigration enforcement actions. News outlets and researchers pointed out during the presidential campaign that immigrants who are in the country illegally are less likely to commit crimes or be incarcerated than the general population. I do not accept the premise in the proposed resolution that AB 54 will jeopardize public safety and federal funding. The fear of loss of federal funding is merely a supposition. The period of rising immigration to the United States from 1990 to 2013 corresponded with plummeting crime rates throughout the country. There's not a valid nexus between crime rates and immigration. The notion of adding layers of bureaucracy to schools, hospitals, and courthouses is an acceptable price to pay for retaining our most important values of democratic fairness and the protections of the due process provisions of the Fourteenth Amendment. I believe that Placerville should not impede the state legislature's assertions that Californians are making it clear that we will not be complicit with the obvious and emerging authoritarian and unconstitutional policies of current federal officials. Judgments made out of fear and cloaking those judgments in the mantle of financial and local control protections, which look good in a report or sound reasonable when spoken from the bully pulpit of public office, will, in my view, put Placerville and you sitting city council members ultimately on the wrong side of history and acting in opposition to the very democratic values of decency, fairness, and quality that councilless generations of my fellow veterans have sacrificed their lives to protect. Thank you for your time. Thank you. Before the next speaker, I would just like to say, and I'm not doing this for an applause line or anything, so don't. We will not be revisiting this issue again. Yeah.
My name is Guadalupe Medrano. I've lived here in, I live here in Placerville. I've been here for 52 years. I was born in Mexico, but I was brought here as a young child because my mom passed away. My dad always worked here in the orchards, and he was a very hard worker. Then he worked at EID for 25 years. I have worked for inter-county and all republic, those are my only jobs, but I am very happy to have heard you, the mayor, saying that your background, you're Italian, so you know how we feel. Like I said, I've been here all my life. I have a lot of friends that, of course, are immigrants, with and without documents, but just like everybody in this room, has a background with or without papers. And I just think that we all have the right to be here, and I really am glad that you started that of what you said in your background. And I just, I just hope that this town, this county, is going to support, because I know the department, the sheriff department, how they work. I mean, I have a son that he's my color, dark complected. When he was going to college, he got stopped several times just because of his color, and he never said anything to me because he knew how I would react, go and talk to someone. But I just want you guys to really think in your heart, how would you feel if you were in my friends' shoes? And I know everybody in this room has a heart, and we're all the same, we just look different in the outside, but in the inside, we have the same color of blood. Thank you.
My name is Pauline Grady, and my husband, Joseph, and I have been living in this community in Placerville for about 30 years, and we're both retired educators. My husband worked at California State Prison in Folsom, and I worked here in El Dorado County at the high school. He actually wrote this. He couldn't be here tonight, so he wanted me to read this, and thank you for this opportunity. The assumption seems to be that SB 54 is going to compromise the public safety and security of cities like Placerville. No. Regardless of SB 54's passage, illegal immigrants who have committed a criminal act and are incarcerated will be held until they can be deported, as they have always been. And by the way, statistics say that those seeking sanctuary in our country are, on average, less likely to commit a crime than an American citizen. And I don't doubt that sanctuary cities already exist in the sense that desperate illegals who have fled violence and poverty and want to start a new life in the United States are already being helped by Americans who see a greater crime in returning these people to a life of hopelessness. Our current president's threat to withhold federal funds from sanctuary cities, as well as his threat to militarize the roundup of illegals, only emboldens those Americans who oppose him and could lead to violent confrontations. President Obama deported some 3 million criminal illegals without threatening the peace in any of our cities. How was that achieved? As for the fear that passage of SB 54 will add layers of bureaucracy, I see a greater bureaucracy on the horizon when local police are forced to do the job of immigration agents, when compassionate citizens are arrested and incarcerated, when violence has to be put down, when our courts are overwhelmed with lawsuits, and when this issue is possibly adjudicated by the United States Supreme Court. I don't advocate throwing open our borders, but what will be the financial and emotional cost when President Trump acts upon his threat to round up some 11 million illegals already living here and try to return them to their country of origin? As for those who are honest, hardworking, and want to become productive Americans, let them stay.
I'm Steve Puttiff, was born and raised here in Placerville, and I'm very sorry to hear that this body will not think about readdressing this issue, because I think it's a critical issue. I have so many wonderful Spanish friends, so many wonderful friends of all the different persuasions, and we all love them, and we all want to see freedom for those that are not causing any issues here. And I think tonight, you're going to hear from President Trump, a change in his address where he's going to be talking about a way of easing this tension and working with the aliens that have come across the border that aren't causing any problems. I don't think any of us want to see them gone, but to see the rapists, the drug dealers, all of those people that have come across this country, that come across the border from all different borders, and have those people released is exactly what we need to do. And furthermore, to have a city to declare that they are a sanctuary city is just going to bring these individuals into that city, as they are in San Francisco, and causing all kinds of murder, theft, problems with drugs, et cetera. So I truly believe that we need to step back, take a breath, look at the new policies that are coming out, which will address this issue, and hopefully, and by the way, there are a lot of people here that are very vocal to this issue, but there are millions of people in California and all over the country that definitely support this movement, and I believe it's something this body needs to continue to think about, even if you don't address it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Nope, we agreed.
Hello, my name is Amanda Carrillo. I'm from Placerville. I agree with his statement as well. My grandma was an immigrant. Unfortunately, she couldn't get a green card, but I know how hard she worked. One of my aunts were actually born in the field, like literally a cotton field. And when it comes down to logistics and checks and balances, we do need to look at what are the facts, who's coming in, how is it affecting our citizens, how is it affecting our population, how is it affecting our budget? You know, how does it help our families thrive, the ones who live here, who are part of the United States? And I just, I didn't come up here prepared whatsoever. I'm just coming to you as a Folsom Lake student who watched the political race and understand that Placerville, California, El Dorado County was 50/50. Half of you guys were for Hillary, and half of you guys were for Trump. So that is our county, and if you actually look at the numbers, we should enjoy that because that means there's more diversity and more unified, and then that means we can actually have more discussions about these things. And I do think we should look on it, because we do have a love-hate relationship with the federal government, right? Let's get it straight. A lot of our firemen, our sheriff, and Mr. Bill with the special hat of his, always fights for our county's freedoms from the federal government, and we come to a line of saying, when is it a give-and-take? You know, what's the checks and balances with that? And if it's good for the economy, and if it looks good for logistics, then why not do it? But I would like to oppress upon the facts of what's really going on, you know, what's really happening. And we can't know for certain until the lawmakers come out with new laws or registration or, you know, all those numbers of F-562, literally, you can literally go through 20 pages and still not understand a thing they say. So we have people to go over that, and we need to make sure there is no loopholes, and we do have a lot of loopholes in the immigration system. And I really feel like a lot of people are getting caught up of Hispanics, but in fact, we actually have a lot of people coming over from Japan who are pregnant, and they're actually getting brought over here, and people are making money off of them. You know, we have to think about the victims of immigration too, who are trapped in the buses, and they are dying to get across the border. We need to fix and help how we see the whole world and the whole aspect of it affect, because immigration is not just Mexico. Immigration is worldwide, and we need to understand that outlook of the worldwide view of it. Thank you. My name's Amanda Carrillo.
Hi, my name is Dulce Soto, and to tell you guys a little bit about myself, I was born here. I was born in 1994 in Placerville Marshall Hospital. I went to Charles Brown, I went to Herbert Green, and I went to Union Mine. I go to, I attend Folsom Lake College. As Folsom Lake College student, I will be graduating this semester, will be going to Sac State to study government, and from there on, law school. So more things about me. I'm part of the Student Activities Club, so I do campus outreach activities. I go out to many events to represent my school, to advocate about college, advocate about higher education. Not only that, I also am, I do a lot of stuff for education overall. I just got hired at the library to do bilingual storytime, so I have worked for the El Dorado County Office of Education. I have also, I'm in the Latino Council, so anything that has to do with the Hispanic community to help them better themselves, I am there. The reason that is the reason why I want to do government, help in a bigger way. So the, I want you guys to kind of see me, see me. I was born here, I am from immigrants, so... So I want to tell you guys that, our story, I am here for a lot of Hispanics. I also work for an immigration attorney. I do translations and interpretations. When we say that we will become a sanctuary state, that does not mean to open our borders, that does not mean that we will stop police officers to not put people in jail because of their crimes. It means that we are not going to let ICE go into schools and take undocumented students out. ICE will not be able to go into ranches where they know there's going to be undocumented people and take those workers out. So that's what it means when they say sanctuary. It doesn't mean that we're going to have all these criminals, this and that. That means that they are not going to be allowed to go into other places. So my, to tell you guys, my family has been coming here since the early 1900s, actually. My grandpa was one of the first ones to start working in Apple Hill. So he actually, with him and a lot of his workers, helped Apple Hill be what it is today. My dad has worked more than 30 ranches in Apple Hill, Coloma, and my dad has the passion, not passion for money, passion for the environment, passion for this community, and then love for his family. So, and I want you guys to know, this is the majority of us. This is who we are. We are here to help the community, to help ourselves. We are very united in so many ways, and it hurts us. It hurts us. I mean, I was born here, but seeing so many people scared. It's scary. I have two children, and my son's like, Mom, what if you get deported? I'm like, honey, I can't get deported. But he hears that. He hears that. And then the other day, someone made a racial comment to him after everything that was going on. And I told him, I was like, honey, you're no different. And let me tell you who I am. I am your mother who loves you. You are going to grow up to be a man that's going to respect every single person. You're no different than anyone, and you are smart. And that's what I am with every child. I work with a lot of people because that's what I love to do, and I try to impact people in positive ways. And this is who we are. This is our Hispanic community. I am the Hispanic community. So, thank you.
Hi there. So I'm Karen Fujita, and I'm originally from San Jose. And I am every nationality there practically is, and so is the rest of my family. I just so happened to turn out this way because of the Russian roulette of DNA. Anyway, but yeah, my son is Hispanic, pure Spanish. His grandma is pure Spanish, and all of that. And my brother-in-law is with immigration naturalization. And the thing about it is, the way I look at immigration, it's just like inviting someone into your house. You expect anyone to come into your home as a guest, as a resident, as a roommate or something, and bring something positive with them. If we look at global issues the same way we look at our personal home, this is our home. I was born here, but my relatives were from Norway, Sweden, you name it. I mean, everything in Europe, except for Spanish. And now my son, okay, he's Spanish, all of that. I mean, and then now we just had a little baby, and she's Arabic, and all of that. I mean, we don't care, as long as you have a beating heart and a brain in your head and a kindness about you, that's all that I care about. And then the original people, the natives, I mean, the first boat people that I remember in my history book in first grade, the first boat people were British. They were coming over here, they made a big commitment, running away from somebody that was greedy, and they were all starving, and they wanted their kids to eat. And they made a big old commitment, a big old hanging trip. They ran out of food, they're sick on the boat, there's pregnant women vomiting, and the Indians said, come on over, and let's just like show you what to do. And by the way, this tree bark over here turns into aspirin. And we began. And then, of course, then the redcoats came, and the Indians were showing us where to hide and use camouflage while everybody's wearing a big red coat and all of that. And they're like sitting ducks in their big red coat, trying to tell us what to do and take our money and everything over to England, and we dumped the tea in the tea party. So I mean, I know that's not exactly written that way in the history books, if you want, you know. I just kind of improvised here because we don't have all day. Okay? So we're a nation of everything under the sun, and I think that's great because we are now a global society. My child, for instance, plays video games with people in Japan, in Africa. I have a pen pal in Africa, by the way. And I'm telling you, it's a global community, and the only way that we can make sense of it all is when you bring someone to someone's home, and then you fight for that home because there's somebody being vicious outside that's trying to like shoot you down, and then your guest now becomes side by side with you, saying, hey, you know what, that's terrible, and let's go stop that guy and like tie him up or something, you know? That's a good person. And I don't care who you are, where you're from, or what you look like. You have a beating heart, you have a kindness about you. We're all human beings here, and I don't see a black stallion refusing a white mare, or a white mare refusing a red horse, and they don't have a problem, so why do we?
Excuse me, excuse me. I hate to say this, but your three minutes is up. I'm sorry.
All right, you have a, you have a really...
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
You have a really tough act to follow.
My name is Tim Comidi, resident of Placerville. I live here in Placerville, and I teach down in Coloma. And I would like to first acknowledge that the concerns brought up in consideration of item 12.3 are real. I'm glad that you are paying attention to the repercussions and looking at concerns for our community and the impacts of international politics. I also want to thank you for listening to the bigger picture. I am a family from immigrants, Italian history as well. I have a lot of family who have come here, and we are all very concerned about the state of California. I teach children down in Coloma about the history of immigrants from American and Chinese, et cetera. And what I saw this evening was consideration of not just numbers, but consideration of consequences and impacts. So I want to thank you, Mayor, and the rest of the council members for taking off this agenda item when it was seen to be jumping to conclusions. So thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Sean Frame. I'm from Placerville. And I came here tonight to speak on Agenda Item 12.3. When I first read the item, I looked at the justification for having such a resolution from our city council, primarily being the potential economic impact from sanctions by the federal government and the law enforcement implications. And when I looked into those, what I found is that those items really didn't have any basis in fact. There was, in fact, nothing to support those arguments. But when I thought about it further, I realized that there would probably be some very real consequences to such a resolution. The first being the fear that would be engendered in the immigrant community, which is a very important community here in Placerville. And that saddened me because it made me think, you know, if you think it through, if there aren't any real implications, and what you're doing is terrorizing a part of our community with such a resolution, I don't think you could look at that as a positive. The second impact that was very real that I saw was one that would be economic. You know, if the immigrant community decides that they don't want to be here, the very important agriculture and tourism industries in this town, in this community, would be dramatically and gravely affected by such a resolution. The city of Healdsburg, which also has a very similar agricultural and tourism makeup to our own, including the wine industry, has gone the opposite way. They've said, we want to be a sanctuary city regardless of whether the state passes this SB 54. And they did that with the full knowledge that they would be supporting a very important part of their community. Though you've said tonight that you're not going to look at this again, I think I'd urge you to consider taking that action rather than the one you proposed tonight. And I wholeheartedly hope that if this does come back to your agenda, it will be in the form of recommending that Placerville be a sanctuary city. Thank you very much.
Hi, good evening. My name is Catherine Thornburg, and I live here in Placerville, and I'm a teacher here in the community. And the reason I'm standing up here is because, first of all, I am very thankful that you have removed this item from the agenda. But I want to speak a bit, as this gentleman before me spoke, in how important it is to think about ourselves as a place that is safe for people. As a teacher, one of the things I hear, one of the things I've heard, is kids coming to me and saying, Mrs. Thornburg, we have to leave, not because we're not safe, but because our parents aren't legal. And so they come in tears to the classroom, thinking that they may not be with their families for much longer. And it is heartbreaking to see a kid in tears who is afraid that their parents will be taken away from them. And how can they possibly think about homework and things that they have to do for school, being successful academic students, if they're concerned that their families will not be there? So what is really important, and I really hope that we as a community can count on your not revisiting this idea, what's really important is that we create a safe place for our families, for our children, and an opportunity for them to live and grow up in a community where they know that they can count on the community to support them. Thank you.
I'm David Zalinski, and I just showed up because, oh boy, a microphone.
It's good to see you without a sling or apparatus.
So it's so exciting. We have a great community, this proves it tonight, and there's a saying from the nature conservancy, always assume good intentions. And I think there's nothing but good intentions on all sides. And so I want to, so I think now that I see how this is going, I think I'll tell you a story about federal and county cooperation and law enforcement. My brother John is a federal agent. He's still a federal agent, but he used to be an FBI agent. And so the San Luis Obispo County Sheriff would call him and say, John, on the way to work, could you come by and get a confession for us? See, John's very annoying. And so I know he broke one banker this way. He went in and he said, I'm going to tell you the plotline of The Blob. And he proceeded to say every single thing that ever happened, blow by blow, in the movie The Blob. I think there's a movie called The Blob, at least that's the way I remember the story. Probably after about five minutes, the banker said, I give up, I'll confess. And so there is a place for state and federal cooperation, especially if only the federal agent can remember the plotline to The Blob. And so we'll leave it at that.
Hi, my name's Eric Nocida. I didn't come with prepared remarks. I'm not good with prepared remarks. Like the mayor, my family is of Italian descent and Greek descent, and back in the '40s, they both, both sides of the family ran away from Europe because bad things were happening. They came without green cards, they came undocumented, and in the preceding generations, including mine, we became very big contributing members of the society. We've paid a lot of taxes in both sides of our family, in those generations that have been here. I'm happy to be here, and I'm glad that back then, there was not this ice kicking us out and throwing us back into Europe for my relatives to be slaughtered by Nazis or whoever. But a little bit lighthearted here, I'd like to ask people in the audience, how many people here is their first city council meeting?
Welcome to the city council.
We're glad you're here. Come back.
So City Councilman Thomas, I really, I really don't like what you proposed. And people have said that, but I want to take a positive spin on it. And what that resolution did was it got people fired up for city politics. And these people will remember all of your names. When they see the reelection signs, they'll remember the names, and so you have a fired up base now. So all I want to do is have you take us into account and just realize we're not all xenophobic and we're not all Trump supporters, that we're a very diverse community. Thank you very much.
And I'm not xenophobic.
I think I see someone coming from stage left. I did.
Thank you. My name's Dirk Dreesen. We just recently moved to Placerville from the Bay Area.
Welcome to Placerville.
Thank you. It's our first home, and we came here, we were amazed by the welcome that we received here. I want to share just a brief story with you today. My grandfather was the vice president of foreign investments for Bank of America in the 1940s and 50s. He remembers, and he taught me quite well, that there are the rules that we place on each other that are out there and in the public, and that there are the rules that you and I live by on a day-to-day basis called morals. And they don't always agree. He was forced many a time to basically rubber stamp no on loan applications for Chinese immigrants, for Mexicans, a number of races. We can't allow that to continue. We live in a global economy. When I read the proposal, what stuck out for me, there are many passionate people here tonight, I'm not going to speak about the passion. What I'm going to speak about is what you could do to your city. I'm going to take five seconds right now and remain silent, and I'd like each of you to think about what has happened right now on your overpass on 50, the Love Not Hate Boycott Placerville sign that is currently hanging over your freeway. And think about what that will do to your economy should something like this come up again. This isn't a yes or a no vote. This is about morals and what we believe in. Thank you.
Sue Rodman, longtime Placerville resident, or at least 30-year Placerville resident. And I would like to take us back in history a couple hundred years and remind us that once upon a time, California was not California. California was all to California, and it belonged to Mexico. It was part of Mexico. There was no California until about, oh, what, 1840s? 1849?
1848, actually.
1848? So before that, we were part of Mexico. And so to deny people from Mexico now to come here to what was historically their home seems a little bit odd. And I'd like to tell you the story of my grandparents and progenitors. My grandfather came from Ireland in the 1920s. He was not welcomed. My grandmother came on a ship from Ireland. She was not welcomed. There were signs saying Irish need not apply. He had come as, he had graduated from Trinity College in Dublin with a law degree. The best job he could get was a bail bondsman job. The best job he could get was a bail bondsman job. His son, my father, joined the Navy. He fought in World War II on Minesweeper and a Destroyer. And I come from that proud heritage. My mother's people came from Denmark and Norway and Sweden and Wales. So I am the product of immigrants. Many of us are the product of immigration. And to turn our backs on other people who need those same opportunities seems like a very backward thing to do. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Maggie Bush, and I represent the Johnny Vineyards and the agricultural community. I have prepared remarks addressing just the economic impact to which I could address, and I will leave these for you. I just wanted to let you know that this is my first city council meeting, and I will be back. I was very upset to see this resolution go on the agenda with no discussion and no community input, and I'm very disappointed. And I will be active, and you will see me back.
I wouldn't want to be in your seat right now. I wanted to first acknowledge that I think I understand exactly where you're coming from, because you have a huge responsibility with the road construction, the problems that we're having, especially with the floods highlighting everything that's going on. I live up around Chamberlain Street, and I've dealt with you guys directly. And I wanted to actually thank you for reaching out to me directly, and that indicated to me that you really are putting a lot of time into making this a better community.
Could you raise the mic up? There you go.
Here we go. Anyway, my point is I believe that your intentions were in the best interests of the community, and obviously, not everybody here agrees with the outcome of that. And I heard that you apologized to the agricultural community, you apologized to your city council members. I think that we need to hear more than that. I think that the people who live here obviously need to hear that there's more to this than just the fiscal impacts, obviously. And I know you don't want to revisit this, and I appreciate that, and it probably is the right thing in terms of actually making a resolution, one way or the other. At the very least, though, I think that there needs, something needs to happen so that way we, not that people just in this room, but the entire community here after this meeting is over, can hear that the immigration, immigrant community is supported. And I'm not sure what that looks like, but we'd like to hear something a little bit more than that.
Your name? Excuse me, sir, sir, sir. Excuse me, your name is?
I'm sorry, my name is Jamie Lowe.
You are, oh, hi, Jamie. Nice, we had a nice chat, I had a nice chat with Jamie today. It was very satisfying, anyway. I'm sorry. Go right ahead.
Hi, my name is Fern Alexander. I'm a Placerville resident. I've lived here now for 22 years. I moved here from the East Coast. My family is a family of immigrants from Eastern Europe. And I remember hearing a lot of horrible stories about things that happened to them there, and many of them didn't make it. But with all of the events that have happened, all the changes since our new president has taken office, I was really, really gratified to see how the state of California came to the backs of its residents. And to hear that Placerville would consider going against what the state of California is considering doing and many, many states around, cities around this state are doing, and coming to the backs of the people who live there and support its economy and contribute to its communities, mortifies me. It really does. It mortifies me to live in Placerville, that that is even being considered, because it's wrong. It's just wrong. And I, one of the things that I've said, considering taking the ACA off the table, what's happening with immigrants, all of the other possible things that may come down for this state, the senators of this state and the congresspeople of this state have made clear that they have the backs of the people who live here. And I really appreciate that. I feel like this is one of the safest states at this point for citizens to live in for a variety of reasons. But if Placerville can even consider going against some of that and not supporting its own people, I think it's horrendous, and I think you do owe us an apology. I appreciate your being, your considering taking this off the table. I hope it stays off the table, but I think you owe us more than that. And I thank you very much.
Does anybody else, does any, excuse me, does anybody else wish to speak? Oh, we do. Okay, please.
Hi, my name is Dara Presley, a resident of Eldorado County. Couple things, quick things. One is that, and I know there was, I'm sure there was good intention with any previous speakers that did refer to human beings as illegals or undocumented. I'm sure they didn't mean anything negative by that, but I think we ought to be careful how we refer to human beings. Human beings are not illegal. We're all perfectly great. And people aren't undocumented. They're people who may not have documentation to be here legally. That's thing one. The other is that, sort of behind something a gentleman said two speakers ago, that I look forward to hearing about plans that are, that will be in place to help protect the immigrant community and, as well as people of many colors and religious affiliations in our community. So I look forward to hearing more details about that in the future. Thank you very much.
Well, I think I am very pleased with my community tonight. I had absolutely the highest expectations that this meeting, this part of this meeting would go exactly as it has, and my faith has been satisfied. So we actually have a jam-packed, fun-filled agenda coming up, and you probably won't want to miss the exciting consent calendar. We're going to talk about some zoning issues. We have a giant contract, I think we have a contract extension, which, no, we don't? Oh, I'm sorry, that was the last time. Anyway, what I'm going to do, oh, by all means, I'm sorry, because I get going. Please.
First of all, I want to thank you for being here. I am really proud of our community for how you've showed up tonight and the dialogue that we were able to have over this topic. And if my action before us tonight got us to this point where we could have a constructive dialogue, then I am grateful for that. And thank you for showing up. I learned a lot, and I hope all of you learned a lot too from everyone's comments. And this is always what I have cherished about our town, that we embrace each other, that we are diverse, but that also includes a diversity of thought, and that we embrace each other with kindness and grace, with the, always the intention of seeking a deeper understanding. So I'm really proud of us as a community for doing that tonight, and I thank you for that. Mr. Lowe, I would also like to take this opportunity to offer a few insights as to why this has even been in my thought, and I owe that to you. And so with that, I'd like to do that. I think this all started when I realized that Sacramento was on the bullet train to achieving sanctuary state status, and I found that a lot of people around us had no idea that we were that close to becoming a sanctuary state. And that caused us to ask the question, is this the best solution for California? It had, or for our city? It has nothing to do with what aisle of the political aisle you lay on. In my mind, I just thought we needed to at least explore all options, because there's a lot at stake here. And we talked about passion tonight, and all of you showed up with great passion. And I'd like to talk about my passion too. I'm passionate about Placerville. For those of you who know me, I am one of Placerville's biggest cheerleaders. I am her fierce defender and champion, and I look at everything through her lens. And I think, as an elected official for the city of Placerville, that's, I need to do that. And so I'm a little strange, you know, I agonize over whether we're going to have the money to fix our roads. I agonize how our business districts are going to thrive and how they're going to be supportive, how we're going to remake areas of our city and keep them relevant, how we're going to honor our history while remaining strong for the future. I struggle with what policies we need to amend, alter, delete, so that our city can remain whole and have as much of the future as her past. These are things I wrestle with. And so when broad-sweeping legislation comes into the arena, I have to ask the question, is this the best policy for our city, for our county, and our state? And asking the question doesn't mean that I'm a xenophobe or a racist, I'm just asking the question and opening thought, because I don't presume to know what the answer is. So I've been asking and talking with folks, is SB 54 the best way to, number one, protect our citizens, and number two, protect the hard-working immigrant families that are a vital, vibrant, and valued part of not only our local economy but our state's economy? Without, and these are the other things that I wrestle with, without overwhelming our resources, both at a city level and a state level, without taking away local control, we're passionate about retaining our local control, without unduly tying the hands of our law enforcement, without enabling the criminal element to flourish in our cities and our state, and that's not immigrant or any other, just the criminal element, and without jeopardizing federal funding, which is a third of our state budget. Like I said, I don't presume to have the answer to these questions, but these are the questions I have to ask as a council member, as I wrestle with things. Because the bottom line to me is, if we don't have a prosperous and vibrant city, county, and state, we can't be a refuge, a sanctuary, or the land of opportunity for anyone. And I don't care what color your skin is, we're not going to be a land of opportunity if we can't remain whole. So, once again, I'm so proud of us for being able to open up this discussion, and I have been in touch with members of the Wine Growers Association and the agricultural community, and we had a really great discussion this afternoon that we're going to continue in a couple of weeks. I'm going to go up there, and we're going to have just a really honest discussion, so I can really understand what issues they're dealing with, and we can talk about what constraints perhaps a city needs to wrestle with at their budget. And at the end of the day, that's what I want, to have informed discussions so we all can make the best decisions. And we're encouraging Sacramento to also continue that and have, and make informed decisions, rather than taking broad-braced legislation, which may remain, may work for San Francisco and the city of Placerville. I want them to understand and to also understand what constraints we have as a rural community. So I'm going to be continuing my knowledge on this issue, and I'm going to continue these discussions with folks just for the basis of understanding. And I thank you for engaging in this process tonight, because we're all on the same team here. We all want a happy, safe, healthy community that is vibrant and whole, and we can enjoy a vibrant state as well. So thank you for helping us engage in this process. I appreciate it.
We are...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Does everybody want to?
I would like to, I'd like to make a few comments.
Hold on. We're not, believe it or not, we're not quite done yet.
I would greatly like to thank all those people that are here and that are leaving. I understand that they have to get on to other things. And it certainly is a wonderful thing to see American politics properly in process and in works, and here it is this evening. First of all, I have, my comments are kind of in two phases. One would be sort of a bookkeeping, if you will, and the other would be my own personal comments. When I picked up my agenda on this past Saturday, that was the first time that I became aware of any of the conversations that Councilmember Thomas has just spoken about, and her decision to propose a resolution be submitted for our consideration this evening. I would say that, first of all, that I did not support that method, nor do I support any of the text that's contained in that resolution. Since I became aware of it, I began working with the city manager and other resources to, it was my intention to make sure that the item was removed, because, again, it was not something that I felt is in the purview of the city council, the city of Placerville. We're elected as nonpartisan positions to represent the city, to represent the citizens of the city of Placerville, and I didn't feel that there was any way that that had anything to do with federal immigration processes. And I can assure you, as a few of you have mentioned, I can assure you that in my 11 years on the council, we are frequently the victim of state and federal regulations, most of which come to us unfunded, but yet still with a tremendous demand that they be followed to the letter of those law. So we're very well, we're very well-versed on having this unlevel playing field that we have to deal with. And the current tremendous, very political atmosphere that exists over this issue needs to be addressed. And I would hope that you would not be discouraged, and you would contact your state and federal legislators, your assemblymen, your senators, your state senators, your congressmen, and let them know that you do or do not approve of their activities, just as you came here this evening, so very well organized. I really, truly appreciate that. And I was, we've been very busy trying to respond with a number of very real impacts since this item became public and was noticed, starting last Friday, that it was going to be on this evening's council. So those impacts were very real, and they've already, they've already had to have been dealt with. And to come here this evening and do such a wonderful job, and you are a great, organized group, and you were very polite, you were very on point, you were very passionate, you were very clear in your concerns, and you were very open with your true emotions, your true family stories, and the struggles that you have, that we all, we are all immigrants in this room. And all of you were willing to come here this evening and be a part of this process, really, I think, is, you know, I've always tried to find a positive in any difficult situation, even in the floods, we've tried to find positive things, community members working to help us, a dedicated staff. Simple sunshine was a great break. And to have this turn out the way it has this evening, through your presentations and your behavior as a group through this particular item, I think is a real, strong statement to the quality of this community and the concern and dedication that each and every one of you has expressed with your words and your time and your presence here this evening. And I want to just say, as someone that tries to be a small-town politician, thank you very much for restoring my faith in the process. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So I also would like to add my thanks. I ditto many of the same things that Mr. Acuna had to say to you, and I, if anything, I really, I think that you guys have shown tonight, and I hope you continue with your compassion, there's not too much we can do at this level, but you need to get those letters going and your comments to your assembling people, our senators, they're the folks that are going to be voting on this, and you really need to make your voices heard, just like you did tonight for us. And thank you again. And thank you again.
Patricia? You good? Okay. Okay. I think, I think now we're done.
Five minutes, Mr. Mayor. Clear the room?
Yes. We are going to give everybody five minutes. Thank you very much. You're welcome to stay and go through our fun-filled and fun-packed agenda, but if you have actually something better to do, which is highly likely, go out, do drive safely on your way home. Thank you very much. We do have one more item in written, or in the, kind of the open-mic part of the, of our show, and that is written communications, and we got a lot of them. Most of them about the subject we just finished talking about. We're not going to enumerate all of them. Are there any, is there anything that we need to talk about? We received a lot of, this is, now this is a meeting I'm used to. Anyway, okay. Let's go to the consent calendar. Does anybody want to?
I'll move approval of the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
Would anybody like to comment on the consent calendar? Okay, thank you. Can we bring, I'll bring it back here. There's no comments or questions, okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkins?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We have no items pulled from the consent calendar. Ordinances, number 10 ordinances, waive the second reading and adopt an ordinance amending Title IX, chapters one, three, and four of the Placerville Municipal Code related to parking. Mr. Morris?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just quickly, this is actually the third time this has come back to you on your agenda due to a change we made at the last meeting and did the first reading rather than the second reading. The proposal before you tonight is to make the changes that have been discussed at our previous meetings. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer those. Otherwise, we're recommending that you waive the second reading and adopt this ordinance, which will then go into effect 30 days from adoption.
I actually do have one question.
I do, too.
Oh, well, go ahead.
No, no.
Okay. I was asked the other day if we are going to get new signs about parking.
Yes, we will be getting new signs to address the changes that.
The changes, okay, fine, thank you. I told them yes, so that was good. I did not lie to them, okay.
My question is, I brought up a couple of issues last time, and I, you said, I believe you said, and I want to clarify, that if we see that something's not working, that we can bring it forth and it can be changed, or is this the law? In other words, what I was, what I was talking about are the lease spaces, and if they're sitting vacant on the weekends especially, how we can make that work for public parking. And you, okay.
That, it would require, if you wanted to change the way that is done, and as you know, we're going to seven-day-a-week lease parking under this proposal, that was the change we made at the last meeting, and that would, that would go forward until you decided to change that. So you would have to come back and change the ordinance to, change it to less than seven-day-a-week or the hours or whatever you wanted to do.
So, and then that's what I'm, without it becoming too conglomerated and stuff, I don't know how that's going to be addressed, but you had mentioned, too, I mean, like, city employees, and we have leased spaces, they're not going to be there on Saturday and Sunday. So that means, how many parking spaces are going to be empty? And I feel as though they should be used, and then, so I just wanted to make sure that...
Well, let me just mention on that issue, especially with, city employee parking is primarily on the third floor of the garage, which we don't have any public parking up there anyway, so that wouldn't be affected one way or the other.
Could we make that public parking?
We, we could. It's not set up for it currently, because it's not, it's not numbered for it.
Right.
The spaces would need to be changed and put into the numbering system and et cetera. So it, it could be.
There's a lot of spaces up there.
However, there are, there are a lot of people who also, that use that as lease parking on the weekends.
Weekends?
Yeah. City employees obviously generally don't. There's some that may be there on weekends, but generally most are not. But there are other employees from other businesses and et cetera that are there on weekends and do use the lease parking on the, on the third floor. So, there's a lot to consider there. We generally have not used that at all for public parking, except that, I know during the holiday season, I believe our enforcement officers have directed people up there from time to time when we have been very full.
I've parked up there, especially like when parades and stuff, and, you know.
You're getting a ticket now?
No. It said it was okay.
Don't get hurt, you say.
Well, I know that, and that isn't my point. My point being, I just, I just think that there's a lot, you know, we're hurting for space, and I just hate to see them just sitting there vacant, you know, and it's...
As always, I think this is going to be, continue to evaluate. That's what we've done for the last, what, 10 years that we've had the parking program, and there's been, I wasn't part of it, but I think if you'd ask your city attorney, he would tell you there were many changes and adjustments that were made to the system as they went along.
And I agree, but it's, it's expensive, though, to keep changing signs.
Sure.
It's very expensive, and I just, you know, I just want to be sure that we've thought about this. I know I've addressed it, and I didn't really get an answer.
If it's on weekends, your concern is mostly the third floor on a weekend.
I'm concerned about, not only third floor, but just leased spaces that folks that just use them Monday through Friday. And they, and since we're going seven days a week, those spaces are theirs. And it just might happen that one day they want to come down on a Saturday and Sunday, and they'll be angry if somebody's in that space.
Right.
But also, I, whoever our parking people are, they're going to be directed to give anybody a ticket for being in that space. And so, I, like I say, it just doesn't make sense to have these vacant places sitting, you know, when we're needing spaces.
And we had, I had a pretty good discussion with our city attorney about, this was the very discussion that I think that happened 10 years ago regarding this, too. However, by the same token, we know that we lease to a lot of retail businesses, and they have the same issue of saying, where do I park if I don't have permit parking? Do I have to pay for the $2 an hour for parking on, on those days, on the weekends? So, it was kind of, I see both sides of it, and, you know, our recommendation is that we go this way to make it seven-day-a-week, but we can reevaluate, or we can, council can...
Well, and I'm not suggesting that we take away the two day, I mean, you know, seven days is fine. I just, like I say, I'm just, I'm wondering if we can't, and how is it going to be, you know?
Yeah.
As I used as an example behind the courthouse, that, you know, I'd drive down there, and it would be, I couldn't find a parking place, but yet, all these spaces would be vacant, and I felt pretty sure nobody was going to be there. But it was a weekend, and the courts weren't in session, and I realize that's all changing now, too, but there, I'm just using that as an example, that it could help it happen, you know, elsewhere, so.
Sure.
That's my biggest concern.
Are there any other questions?
No, sir.
Okay. We would like to open this up for public comment. Would anybody on the public like to comment on this?
Yes, you're stuck with me again. Sue Rodman, been on the parking committee, and I think this, we have come up with the best resolution we can, but I think that Councilmember Borelli brings up a good point, and if there are leased spaces where we know they're not going to be there on the weekends, then just sign those as Monday through Fridays, because those ones in the courthouse, usually courthouse people are not there on the weekends. And if so, if those are all leased spaces and could be put on a Monday-through-Friday basis, so if we have some leased spaces that would be easily signed the other way, we could do that and open those particular ones up, but leave the rest of the leased spaces where we have leased them out to people, and it would be impossible, like the third floor of the garage, an easy way to take care of that on the parade and stuff weekends is we'd be just to have somebody, you know, we have those nice signs, put one up that says, "Third floor open today only" for people to park if we need it. If we don't have, but if that's the place for all of our retail people to use, then we don't want to clutter it up so that they have no place for their employees to park either. So, but the ones like behind the courthouse, or if we know of some, they're absolutely not going to be used on the weekend as lease parking, then leave the signs the way they are for those particular spaces. And that would be an easy solution for that part of the problem.
By all means.
Just quickly, while Dennis, I want to remind people, the spaces behind the courthouse, we do not control. Those are courthouse parking. They, they control those. Those are not our lease parking. Now, would the courts be open to us allowing people to park there? That's a question we'd have to ask them.
I mean...
But we don't control those.
I, I think people park there on the weekends. I don't, you know, it's funny, when you go into that parking lot, those parking spaces are frequently full, and there's nobody, as you, as we know, in the courthouse. So my guess is people are just using those parking spaces anyway, applying their own level of logic and problem solving.
I understand, and I think they do also. I'm just saying, we don't control those spaces.
Right.
They belong...
So we can give them away to anybody. Go ahead.
I've always been afraid of getting a ticket there. But does that make them susceptible to getting tickets?
No, because we don't, because we don't...
Because we don't, it's not our jurisdiction.
We, we don't enforce it.
Yeah?
That's up to the courts if they want to enforce that.
Who is this guy?
Dennis Thomas, I think I'm still chairman of the parking district. I don't know if we're still alive or not, but I would, I would strongly urge the city council to take a pause on this issue, pass what we've done, and then bring it back. Once we get things instituted with the new, the new programs, the new meters, the seven-day-a-week, we're going to find reasons to go through this again. And I can, I can bore you with a whole bunch of details why some of these things would work and why they wouldn't. And the parking committee is very well-versed in all this, and I think that it would be great to bring it, bring them back in four or five months, whatever that number looks like, and, and we can circle back around and look at all these things at one time. And I think, I think you guys have made some good points as well, so.
Well, thank you for recognizing our good point.
My biggest concern was, again, signs and how expensive they are to, if we, you know, we find something, how many times do we, you know, keep making new signs? I think it's expensive.
It is, yes.
So...
But we have, yeah.
No, no, it's a good idea.
Thank you.
The thing is, if we wait five or six months, that would take us through the summer when we're likely to have issues with parking and our growing pains. And as the old song says, "Sign, sign, everywhere a sign." Okay. Is there any, are there any other comments from the public? Okay, I'm going to bring it back here for an action.
With that, I'd like to move that we waive the second reading and adopt the ordinance as noted in the staff's report.
I'll second.
Fantastic. Is this a roll call, because we're spending money, or because, let's do a roll call. What the heck? Go ahead.
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkins?
Aye.
Well, thank you very much. WAVE, waive the second reading of an ordinance amending Title 10 Placerville zoning ordinances, Chapter 4, general regulations, adding Sections 10-4-19 sidewalk dining regulations to the city code to allow and regulate outdoor sidewalk dining areas within the public right-of-way, and adopt said ordinance. Mr. Rivas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This ordinance was first introduced for the first reading at your regular meeting on February the 14th. If adopted, this ordinance shall become effective on or after the 30th day following adoption. Staff has received no additional comment since your first reading to tonight. So with that, staff would recommend that the council waive the second reading of the ordinance, adding Section 10-4-19 sidewalk dining regulations to the city code to allow and regulate outdoor sidewalk dining within the public right-of-way, and then adopt said ordinance. That concludes staff's report.
Are there any questions for staff about this item?
No, sir.
Okay. Would the comment wish, would the comment wish to public? Would the public wish to comment? On this item? Okay, great. Are there any comments?
I would just like to thank planning staff for bringing this forward this year. I know it's something that's been on their radar for a while, and with the completion of the Main Street project, it absolutely is the time to, hopefully, this summer season, maybe even folks with ice cream parlors, could have service out on the sidewalk. I think it would really add a very nice touch to downtown.
It would add a certain continental flavor.
Wouldn't, sir, absolutely.
To the whole place.
Pretend like we're in Paris. El Frisco.
But with a Western flavor.
Yes.
So, Paris, Texas.
Yeah. Paris, Texas.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I so move.
No, no.
Tricia, I've got 10.2. All right, you got it.
Tricia's got the motion.
Tricia is going to make the motion.
You go, girl. Yes.
Councilmember Wilkins has the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Borelli has seconded that. Do we, are these roll calls because we're doing, okay. Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkins?
Aye.
I may remember this by the time I'm done.
Yeah, you're doing great.
The public hearings, 11.1, this item has been requested to be continued to March 14th, 2017, so, what do I do?
We just go on to the next one?
We just go on to the next?
I'd be happy to make a motion to move the item, as staff is recommending, to March 14th.
Okay.
Second?
Okay. Before we take a vote, I do, I really would like to make an end, like in the movie, The Agony and the Ecstasy, when Pope Pius VI looks up at Michelangelo and asks him, "When will this be done?", and then he says, basically, "It'll be done when it's done." I would like to...
How did you remember that?
I have stuff stuck in my head that just, it's a scary place. I would like to really come to a resolution on this issue within, yeah.
Oh, my goodness, yes, this is getting ridiculous.
So, so let's really, really make it so that in two weeks, we come to some conclusion.
Can I mention, Mayor and Council, we, we were waiting for a piece of information that we actually just received today. We didn't know if we would have it by today. We did receive today.
That's fine, great.
I don't know of anything else we're waiting on now, so we will be prepared to look at this on the next one.
It would, it would be good to come to an end of it. Okay. Do we have a public comment on something like this, or?
I don't think so.
We usually don't, because we're not taking action on it. But somebody can't be here, and they want to comment, we've made that exception.
So, in favor of moving this for two weeks? Do we have?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, good.
Did anybody second Mark's motion?
Yes. I did.
Oh.
I seconded.
Slowing down for the clerk's benefit.
I'm telling you, man.
He's on for...
I, you know, sometimes a little too much frivolity on my part, and I understand that.
It's all right.
But I really want to say something. This discussion we had tonight occupied a lot of my time and brainwave patterns, and I'll tell you, and I don't have a lot to spare. So, I might be a little rummy after everything that went on today. I'm just so pleased that we, that, not that we got through it, but that we had a really good discussion, and everybody was, was civil, and I really appreciate that. So if I'm just a little bit loopy right now, it's more than normal. It's because that just kind of really took a lot of my energy. Okay, 12.1 was polled, 12.3 was polled, as we well know. So 12.2 is our only discussion-action item. So, adopt a resolution of intention, ROI 17-01, to initiate amendments to Title 10 zoning ordinance of the city code regarding regulations of accessory secondary dwellings, dwelling... dwelling units within the city that are necessary to be consistent with state statutes adopted in twenty sixteen. Mr. Rivas.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, staff would like to return to item twelve point one.
Oh, we pulled it.
Right, but it doesn't, um, extend it to a date. It's not, it's not continued to a date certain. We have a date certain?
We, we don't need to. We can, we'll just reschedule it. Because it's not a public hearing. If it were a public hearing, we would need to do that. We don't need to.
All right. So twelve point two?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, basically, since the early nineteen eighties, state law has regulated the creation of second residential units. And so in two thousand and three, the law was amended to require local governments to approve second units by ministerial building permit. And during two thousand and sixteen, the law was further amended by the California State Legislature and was signed by the governor, basically initiating, uh, the various changes that are outlined in the staff report and they're bulleted. I am happy to go through them if you wish, but I think they're pretty self-explanatory. Staff provided, uh, the council a, what we thought was a very informative, uh, handout. It's called Accessory Dwelling Unit Memorandum dated December two thousand and sixteen. It has, um, frequently asked questions, uh, through there, uh, that are, uh, well pointed to what these changes represent. Uh, so basically, this is just a resolution of intent. So it's basically the council giving staff direction, uh, to prepare code changes to address the three, uh, bills that were passed. And that's Senate Bill ten sixty-nine, Assembly Bill twenty-two ninety-nine, and then Assembly Bill twenty-four oh six, that being an optional bill. So with that is the opinion of staff that these changes are needed to bring the city's secondary dwelling unit development standards into consistency with recent changes in state law. If our ordinance is not consistent, that means our ordinance is null and void if they, if the, what's now called the accessory dwelling unit ordinance does not meet, uh, the bill's requirements. Uh, so with that, staff is recommending that you adopt a resolution of intent to direct staff to initiate amendments to Title X zoning ordinance, uh, regulating accessory dwelling units within the city that are necessary to be consistent with state statutes adopted in two thousand and sixteen.
Are there any questions for staff? Yes?
Thank you, Pierre. Um, I do have a question on this item. Um, on page sixteen, it talks about, uh, the J D U's, the junior units. And it says, um, that code states that, um, that both types of accessory dwelling units count toward RENA numbers. So my question for you is, um, we don't have to build, um, but we have to identify possible sites. So if we're looking at accessory dwelling units, it seems that a great majority of residential lots could house one of these accessory dwelling units. So my question is, how the heck do we get credit for that as a jurisdiction?
Uh, first, I just wanna, uh, make a statement that we don't see very many of these. I think on average, we probably see an accessory dwelling unit, uh, built every, every couple of years.
But we could.
And so that's, it's not a substantial number of dwelling units. Staff, staff doesn't feel that this is really gonna change that much. I don't think we're gonna see a big rise in the development of accessory dwelling units due to these changes. Cause, uh, staff doesn't believe that the current code is really hindering their development, other than staff will reevaluate, uh, the impact fees that can be applied to accessory dwelling in it.
Actually, that's not what I'm asking though. Sorry.
So the more directly answer your question, staff would have to directly, uh, qualify the occupants of the accessory dwelling in it. In other words, do they meet, do they meet the income, um, criteria to qualify as low and below?
Okay, and are they owner occupied rather than, um, a renter?
Well, they can be a renter.
Okay, but I...
As well. Just for example, if we had an affordable using, affordable housing project, it would be an apartment complex. For example, in our housing, uh, overlay zone, we require that a certain percentage of those units will be affordable. And so it will be then the owner of those units to qualify the occupants of that apartment. So it'd be the same thing here, except for it would be incumbent on staff then to hopefully voluntarily get that information from, uh, the owner of the property that would be renting that accessory dwelling unit. But that's how we would qualify. It would be based on the income of the occupant of that accessory dwelling unit.
So this really doesn't have much application for RENA numbers in the city of Placerville?
We can't run around all our neighborhoods and...
All right. Thanks for explaining that, Pierre. I appreciate that.
Well, we could just put one on each one, you know. I'd sign up.
Well, although it's an interesting sort of, it's an odd, it's an odd kind of, to me, and it's an interesting thought experiment because we are doing the process and we're almost done with putting this overlay over all of these parcels. And some of them actually have like commercial applications, so they could be done for something else. We haven't had an, we haven't had a, a permit pulled for affordable housing in twen- twenty years. So it seems like you can apply the standard to this multifamily stuff and go, yeah, that, those are good for our RENA numbers, even though nothing's ever been done. But for this, it's kinda like, well, as you point out, well, we hardly have any applications. So it doesn't really work. But it could, in theory, I guess, if you said, yeah. I mean, I, I'm not arguing with you, Pierre. You're less smarter about this than I am, but I'm just saying, it's an interesting sort of, uh, thing in my head.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if staff may, we were hap- happy to report that, um, staff did have a conference call with a developer that is interested in, uh, possibly doing an affordable housing project at the Ridge at Orchard Hill site. That was the first site that you applied the housing opportunity overlay to. So we're very excited about that. We're working with them and, uh, trying to, uh, see if it's, if, if it's a possible project to pursue.
That's great news. Thank you. Okay. So, uh, does anybody else have any other questions? Hearing none. Would the public like to talk about secondary dwelling units and junior, Ju- Judo's? J D U's? Junior dwelling units?
J D U's.
J D U's.
Okay. Seeing no one, we'll bring it back here. Uh, would someone like to entertain a motion and actually get a qualified second?
I would like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution of intent, ROI seventeen dash oh one, to initiate amendments to Title X zoning ordinance of the city ordinance code regarding regulations of accessory secondary dwelling units within the city that are necessary to be consistent with state statutes adopted in twenty sixteen.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Fantastic. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Okay. Ah, all right. We are done with that part of our agenda. Council reports from other agency meetings.
Transit's Thursday.
Yep. So is transportation.
Yes.
LAFCO?
We didn't go.
Okay.
There was a conflict.
We did have a CACOG meeting and we got a report on AB's one and ESPY one, which are the transportation, um, oriented, uh, measures that are out there that are kind of, kinda matching up and competing with the governor's, um, proposal that he actually put in the budget this year, which was an interesting turn of kind of events. You know, they, they go after your garden variety types of funds to raise and everybody has their own opinions about whether you should raise the gas tax or not. But they're designed to do about five billion to seven billion dollars, depending on who you talk to. There is some oddities though that we really do need to be thinking about, and I will be pursuing them through CACOG, League of California Cities, Cal, all of the various COG-y type groups. And also, we should be doing this directly. And that is the issue of matching our Measure L money. Because, and as it was described to me by CACOG staff, because ours is not specifically for transportation, it's for infrastructure and it is a dedicated amount from that, but it also includes other infrastructure. They say that it is their considered opinion that, um, we would not be eligible for matching funds in the, in the, there's a, there's a chunk of money going specifically to folks that have self-help. And it's kind of, but if you really read into it, it's really kind of like a club of a handful of counties that go into this thing and the sort of money that they put aside. And the idea of some little old town like Placerville kind of getting in on that is really anethema to them. So, um, I, uh, we desperately need to make that, uh, I, at least I think, we need to make that a focus of our, working with our legislators and other folks to make sure that we get involved and, and at least belly up to that bar a little bit. Because there's nothing to say that in any given year, we could take the entire amount of Measure L and put it to roads. And it's, and it is money specifically for road repair. It's the, it's the fix-it-first thing. So, um, I think we need to really be on the ball with that. And, um, I've sort of thought about a, a strategy for, for sort of approaching it. And I'll, we'll all get together with all of you at some point in one way or another and start to put that into play. But that's a really important issue. In fairness, uh, Assemblyman Bigelow came up with, he co-authored a plan that is basically designed to take the sales tax that the state gets, not the stuff we get, but the state gets, and dedicate all of that on, on the sales of cars and trucks, and dedicate all of that to transportation. And it creates about five or six billion dollars. Uh, the problem with anything when you're using somebody else's money is that somebody else is already using that money and clawing it away from them.
Right. Who are you gonna take it away from?
Who are you gonna take it away from? And that, then, then, then his plan gets a little squishy. But there are other plans. I just wanna say that for fairness, there are other plans on the table. Both of them, at least by formula, bring the same amount of money to Placerville.
John, real quick, could you explain self-help versus...
Oh, self-help is just counties, uh, it's mostly counties. There are cities, uh, that, um, have passed a sales tax. Half cent usually, typically they're half cent. They are dedicated to transportation. Most, almost all of them are dedicated to transportation. Alameda County, Contra Costa County.
Right.
Sacramento County.
Right. And don't they form their own, um...
They form like a J P A.
A J P A and they, they manage it.
They manage it. But there's nothing to say that we cannot be a self-help entity, just ourselves. We are in fact the J P A.
So is it automatically that if you, I mean, like we passed our sales tax, our measure, so does that automatically make us a self-help city?
Well, not in the eyes of ESPY's one and AB one. In their eyes, because we don't dedicate it entirely.
To transportation.
But I don't think they understood the question that I posed to them, because I think they thought it, our, that money was going into the general fund and that we were dedicating it to those things. And I don't think they understood clearly that we had actually passed it by a two-thirds vote.
Okay.
So there's a little work that needs to be done with CACOG, just to get them sort of on board. I'm really gonna push them though to help us out.
Oh, absolutely.
Because, you know, we stepped up. Everybody's talking about fix-it-first and so, and help yourself. Well, we went and did it. And then they're kinda like going, eh, but it's not quite the right kind of help. You know, it was like, well, that ain't gonna fly. So we, we need to be very aggressive when we talk to our, our legislators. But we also have to have a cogent sort of approach to it.
But I need you to keep me, I, I'm, I'm gonna represent transportation at the CalCOG meeting and this is major.
We'll get a, we'll get a briefing with Woody and other folks and we'll walk right to it. Okay. But that's, that's the big, big, well, and they're, the, the new executive director will come online in April, which is still a couple of months away. Okay, that's it for me.
Okay, I, I'm gonna report on SEDCOR.
Wow, good.
I was at a meeting again yesterday. And in fact, I chaired it because nobody, um, but, um, we are in the, in the throes. And I think we've got one more meeting left. And after that meeting, I will explain to you our dissolution and how, what we, what's being done. And I, um, I really want Placerville to become a part of the new realm. Um, I talked to, it's, it's involving Sierra Business Council, who's taking it over, basically. Um, they've had to, it's all about, we've had, we had, we had lots of loans. Some folks here, uh, have a loan with our SEDCOR and the different, and how they've had to go about, it's been a tremendous job, uh, finding entities to accept these loans. Uh, there was a lot involved in this whole dissolution thing, but I think it's gonna work out. And the Sierra Business Council, uh, is a great group. They've been around for a long time and I think they're gonna, basically, they're, what they're gonna try to do are the same things that SEDCOR has been doing. But we need to get, um, more active in promoting our economic development. And I talked to her about that, so.
We will be looking for your guidance in this area.
Okay.
Okay. And, uh, two by two?
Nope.
There is no two by two. Okay, great. Uh, request, any requests for future agenda items that have nothing to do, anyway, I'm sorry, go ahead. You're good? Okay, good. It's okay. City manager, city manager, I have nothing, um, to, to ask for. No, we have the city manager and staff reports. Yeah, don't you?
I don't, I don't believe we have any reports.
Anything additional? Upcoming items. Okay, Mar- March fourteenth, twenty seventeen include mid-year budget, destruction of records, police debt, department, not police debt, police department. Well, that's a good one.
We're just gonna destroy that whole thing.
Destroy all the records having to do with police debt. No, police department. Broadway sidewalks, contract award, Blair's contract change order, Western Placerville interchange's phase one B closeout, Kaplan Movement Project, CIP Placerville Drive. With that...
And actually, I would like the council to know, I will be out of town at the next council meeting, so I will not be here, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Well, that's it, folks. Thank you all very much for coming and staying. I appreciate it. We never had my drink, and so I'm going to go to a bar. And you can come with me.